Good evening and welcome to the Southbridge Town Council meeting of Monday, January 14th, 2019. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 We'll call it as excused this evening. Counselor DePietro is here. Counselor Nash? Present. Counselor Steves? Present. Okay. Agenda item 3A, considering accepted joint redevelopment authority town council minutes of December 17th, 2018. Is there any errors, corrections, or omissions? Counselor Adams?
Yes, under agenda item number five, where it says, a motion was made by Counselor Nash, seconded Adams by Counselor Devoe on this item, I think it just needs to be reversed there, seconded by Counselor Adams. That's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anything further? All those in favor as amended? Opposed, abstained?
Mr. Chair, as I just walked in the room, did not hear the question, I would refrain from voting.
Okay, thank you. Considering accepted town council minutes of Monday, December 17th, 2018. Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Counselor Steves?
Yeah, I've got a few things. Under agenda item number three, it lists us, we voted on it as amended, but I don't, I don't remember how it was amended, and we should really include the discussion a bit so we have some idea of what the amendments were. On item number eight, Mr. Stoddard's address is actually 22 Jacobs Road, I don't know where Heritage Road came from. I'm not sure about this, Chris shown the last person in agenda item number eight, because there is no 59 Pine Hill Street. I don't know where that came from. Item number 20, 24, that should be, that got confused with item number 25, that one, the first one, 24, should read $102,020 and zero cents. And item number five is the 3705, 25, sorry. And under item number 27, the very last, the very last line, it was, the item was removed and will be referred back for the study, really, it was held because the Economic Development Office hadn't held a public hearing yet. And at the end, the meeting adjourned from executive session, actually, we returned to open session and adjourned at 9:41.
Correct.
Other than that, that's it.
(inaudible) 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 Are you all set? Counselor Adams?
Agenda item number 26, says where Ken Comey stated that they wanted to hold a public hearing in half, question mark, question mark. I'm not sure what that was supposed to be. At 7:00 PM.
(inaudible)
Yeah, I may have to look back at the video.
Counselor Nash?
Thank you, for you. Excuse me, on agenda item 28, Counselor's forum, Counselor Nash thanked, go down to the fourth line, near the end, should be formidable, F-O-R-M-I-D-A-B-L-E, with her facts, just spelling. Thank you.
Anything else? The mayor's consent, I'm going to withhold, approving those minutes, we'll have them put back in the packet for the next meeting so that we make sure that we have all those corrections in place, okay? Any objection to that? Seeing none? So we'll hold on that, acceptance to the next meeting. Subcommittee reports, general government, Counselor Steves?
Yes, the last meeting we had was December 18th, two of our agenda items, numbers nine and 11, came from that meeting. We also briefly discussed the idea of marijuana host agreements, we talked about the airport diner issues, and we'll bring that up for further, more detailed discussion with the Airport Commission at a later date. We talked about demolitions and how to prevent them and using such properties when the town owns them for a little while, and we got a quick update on joint multi-town insurance purchasing. And as I said, I'll bring up the items nine and 11 when we get there.
Thank you. Department of Public Works, Counselor DePietro?
Nothing to report, Mr. Chair, at this moment. I am looking forward to at least one, if not two, within the next several weeks that have been requested, but we have yet to come up with a date.
Okay, thank you. Education and Human Services, Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for you. Our last meeting was held on Tuesday, January 8th, and there were two items that resulted in recommendation to council, numbers 10 and 18, on tonight's agenda regarding the Chris Heron contract for speaking at the middle school, as well as the Bay Path Assessment Reduction. There is a meeting that will be posted on January 23rd at 6:30 with a short agenda to date. And at this point, we don't have minutes to read. Thank you.
Thank you. Plan development, Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for you. Item, agenda item number 15, 16, 17, on tonight's agenda, no meeting is scheduled, we did have a scheduled meeting for the 15th, this coming Tuesday, that's been canceled. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Protections of persons and property, Counselor Manor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for you. I did have a meeting, was it the 10th? I think it was the 10th, yes, the 10th. And those minutes aren't ready yet, I don't believe, but that's okay. There are a couple of the items on the agenda tonight that we discussed, and I do have a planned meeting for the 17th, and that's to go over the IOD process and the fire department, so. And that's at 6:30.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman announcements, if you'd just indulge me, I have quite a few. First off, just want to announce to the public that Counsel Jorge Morales has resigned from the town council effective January 11th, 2019. He submitted a letter to the council on Friday. Indicated in town, Southbridge Town Council, to Chairman and Town Council, with regret that I'm writing to inform you of my decision to resign my position on the Southbridge Town Council, effective immediately. My other commitments have become too great for me to be able to fulfill the requirements of my position on the council, and I feel it is best for me to make room for someone with the time and energy to devote to the job. It has been a pleasure being a part of the town council, best regards, Jorge Morales. I'd like to thank Counsel Morales for his service to the town. Certainly understand the challenges that you have with family and the commitments to be on the council. I wish him the best of luck going forward. Again, this will be a second vacancy on the council, so now we will operate the remainder of the year with seven counselors. And this is due to the fact that no special election is triggered per the town charter. With that, I'm going to have to again reassign subcommittees, as well as possibly remove chairs of subcommittees, and based on some actions that may take place later on tonight, I'll get that out to you by the end of the week. Again, the charter, very specific, because I know it's been out there on social media about why we don't fill the vacancy, per the town charter, Home Rule Charter, Section 2-8-1, a vacancy in the office of town counselor, whether caused by death, resignation, or removal, shall be filled by a special election to be called within 30 days of said vacancy, unless a regular town election will occur within 180 days. Due to the fact that the town election will occur in that 180 days, we will not have to do a special election. So we will have five seats open in June. There will be three three-year seats, one two-year seat, and one one-year seat. To the town manager, just, there's been some conversation, I know I've noticed it in some areas, possibly we can get this moved over to DPW, about water runoff that goes into the streets, causing icy conditions, specifically some areas of concern, Maria Ave, Morris Street, school and West Street. I've noticed a huge accumulation of water and runoff in that area, I'm not sure where that's coming from. And also, on Main Street, I know we had some information sent over to the hospital for that property there, in which it appears they put a drain that drains from that property down the sidewalk, but again, into the street, and I believe we have a bylaw that would not allow that. So if we can get that over, I'm not sure who's responsible for mitigation, monitor, and notify them, but if we could have that at least attended to and report back to us. Counselor Man?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could I also add to that list, Dudley River Road, there's a lot of water runoff from the driveways that are coming into the road, and there's very bad icy spots on Dudley River Road.
What block is that?
Dudley River Road.
Dudley River Road?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'd like to add Cliff Street.
And Cliff Street, so.
Mr. Chair, if I could add to that, just so no one's pointing fingers at anyone locally as far as addressing this, Ashland Avenue, which happens to be right by my house, which actually comes with the Mass DOT, which is the state, it's, it's just been an unprecedented year for this, so it's, it's something kind of new that I'm sure Heather's having to deal with now. I made the phone call myself and actually addressed the state, they came insulted, chopped everything up, and then just threw everything on everybody's front lawn.
But I just, you know, if it's a natural runoff, and that we can't handle it, that's fine, but if people are pumping water into the streets, that's something else that we have to look at, especially-
No, this is, this is something quite new.
Yep.
Everybody has.
Okay. Well, no, the one on Main Street is not natural. I mean, they have a drain that goes right into the sidewalk. Also, it's come to my attention, we've had some conversation about this, about the need to appoint a bylaw review committee. The last, I've done some research on this, the last appointed bylaw review committee was in December of 2011. That one was chaired by the retired Fire Chief Leonard Laporte. Southridge Home Rule Charter, Section 5, the Charter and Bylaw Review Provision states that in every year following issuance of a report by the Charter Review Committee, the Chair of the Town Council shall appoint a bylaw review committee. Committee will consist of five members and shall report its recommendations to the Town Council within one year from date of appointment. My research has shown that the last charter amendment was amended, or the last amended bylaw was September 4th of 2014, so they were appointed in 2011, at the end of 2011, so they started in 2012, so it took almost two years to get those bylaws approved. So now we're four-plus years out. The charter was revised by special legislation, approved by a town vote on June 28th, 2016, so by my understanding of this provision, it should have been appointed in 2017, it was not. So I'll be looking for interested parties to submit a letter of interest to the Town Council Chair through the town manager's office.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Counselor Manor?
I do apologize, but I believe the bylaw review committee was before 2011, when Chief Laporte headed that, because I was on town council then. And I wasn't on town council in 2011. So I think it might have been 2015.
The-
Because there was, and then there was one before that, where Counselor McDonald-
Right.
He headed, so that one may have been in 2011.
That was, I'm only going by the information that Yvonne had provided to me, that she pulled the file and showed me the appointment letters, that it was appointed in December of 2011, and actually, vote was in 2012.
Yeah, but there was another bylaw review committee after that, because I was on town council at that time, I remember sitting up here, and, yeah, so, and I got, I first got elected in 2013, so I'm sure it was either in 2014 or 2015. But we had the charter amended, the charter was voted on, and there should have been another bylaw.
Correct. So that's what I'm saying, it's not, you know, so the research shows that it was last amended in 2014, so your point is well taken, that's when it was last amended, while you were on council, but the last actual bylaw review committee was seated in 2012. So it could have been that that's how long it took to get over, but in any event, it's past due, so we'll move forward with that. Also, Counselor Adams has discussed with me, and as well as the town manager, that there's a provision in the bylaws for trustees of soldiers, sailors, marines, and airmen This is also, this is actually appointed by the town manager, subject to confirmation of the town council, it's under the Southbridge Town Bylaw, Section 3-221. It's five members, three of whom shall be veterans, and two shall not be veterans of any war. Their charge is, the Board of Trustees of Soldiers, Sailors, Marines, and Airmen Memorial shall have charge and control of any memorial established by the town for the purpose of properly commemorating the services and sacrifices of the soldiers, sailors, marines, and airmen who have served the country in war, or persons who have rendered military service for the Commonwealth in time of war. Such board may make such rules and regulations relative to the use of said memorials as they deem necessary. And the reason, I think this is an important, and Counselor Adams can actually reiterate this if he wishes, is the fact that we have memorials throughout town, with the reconstruction, possible reconstruction of Hook and Hamilton Streets, we would have to move that. Also, the Fire Station Building Committee, that's in process, there's a possibility, if they decide to, or if the, if the plan is to move any memorial that's located near the fire station, that would have to go through this board, so it is an important mission. So we'd ask that anybody that's interested in that board to apply through the town manager's office, just as if you would any other board. Schools, schools have been a big topic in town, we talk about this every meeting. I had a recent meeting with the receiver, and we continued discussions on how we can better our schools. Counselor Daniel and myself, and I'm sure, I'll leave Counselor Daniel if he has any comments that he wishes to make later on to the topic of the tour that we made on the high school, I'll leave that to you if you wish, I'm sure you have words for that. Counselor Adams and myself met with Senator Fatman Saturday morning for breakfast, early at 6:30 AM, to talk about a multitude of issues that face the town. We thanked Senator Fatman for agreeing to meet with us at that early hour. It was a bunch of different topics, but at that meeting, we did discuss educational funding of schools through Chapter 70. There's legislation for equitable funding of the schools, and increased funding. Town stands to have a substantial increase in funding, depending on what version that goes through. I did relay some of my concerns about the Chapter 70 funding in respect to how, any increase in the state aid that they give us, how that affects any net school spend and requirements that the town has, because whatever action they make may lift the requirement on the town, that is certainly a issue that they're taking a look at. So that leads me into dialogue about our taxes and our tax rate, and there's been a lot of conversation, and I think it's healthy conversation to have out there in the town about our taxes, the rate, and what the needs of the town are. So with that, I think it's incumbent on the council to continue conversations with the manager about what our budget philosophy will be for the next fiscal year. This is where we get to a delicate balance of what council's responsibilities are, what the town manager's responsibilities are, and how we work together. So again, through the charter, you know, the manager prepares the budget, assembles it, presents it to the council, in a format acceptable to the council, and cooperate with the council in all financial matters. But the general powers and duties of the council are to make all general corporate legislative policymaking and appropriation powers are vested in the council. So how do we balance that? How do we balance the preparation of a budget that the town manager and his department had to present to the town, and what our expectations of what a tax increase may be acceptable to the body of the town? So I think that going forward, we need to have a conversation about what our philosophy on the budget on FY 2020 are, in respect to what our expectations as to what the presentation to this board will be. Will it be level funded, level serviced, or needs budget? Because certainly, there are a lot of needs out there, and it's our job to balance the needs of all, along with the challenges that the town faces when it comes to public safety, fixing roads, building a fire station, providing public service, public safety. I talked to the fire chief, the police chief, we talked about what their staffing levels were in 1995, what the staffing levels are now. For instance, the fire department from 1995 has never gotten back to the staffing level that they had, yet the calls for service are double of what they've had in 1995. The police chief gave an eye-opening number in which he's operating with four less police officers than they did in 1995, but the calls for service in 1995 were roughly 9,000 calls, and as of the end of 2018, are 36,000 calls. That's, I commend every single individual in this town that works for us for the performance that they do day in and day out without the resources that they truly need, and that's something that we have to work together and balance as we move forward. So, this conversation about this council cutting commercial tax rates, we did not cut a commercial tax rate. The rate for taxes is the same for a commercial piece of property as it is for a residential property. The issue continues to be what the valuations are and the growth in those valuations. But it's a healthy debate. Individuals tell us and come up here and say, hey, let's just split the tax rate. Well, that could be an easy fix, but if we didn't study it, or had that option before the council beforehand, every decision that we make has a second order of effect. So we work very hard to study every piece of information that we have available to us and not make knee-jerk reactions. So I think going forward, for the rest of this fiscal year, that we need to work together to develop those very plans. Because this is a very good town, it's an excellent town, I grew up here, I am a taxpayer, I'm not self-serving myself, I've lived in the town of Southbridge since 1967. My grandparents came from Albania, one set, one set came from Italy, they worked hard at the American Optical, my parents worked hard in town. I care about this town just as every other council does. We're not a poor community. We may have social, economical challenges, but we are not a poor community, as I've heard publicly. Do we have budget struggles? Yes, we do, but we can work together. We have good resources, but we can do better. We have a school district that is in need of help, but we can do better, and I am confident that with these fellow councils that I work with every day, we're working to move the community forward in a positive direction. And as the charter says, this council shall provide policy and political leadership for this town, and that's what we will continue to do. I encourage anyone that wishes to come and talk to us, don't just do it on social media, don't just do it on Facebook, come to these meetings. We had five meetings this week, outside of, Mr. Marquetti, I give you credit because you're at those meetings, no other citizen came to those meetings. There was a couple redevelopment people, but come to these meetings because they're important, we need your help, we need your input. But we will continue to move forward, and thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and first, I want to thank you for your comments regarding the budget. I'm always very interested in working with the town council on the budget and getting input from individual councils as to what they think as well. The last three years have frankly been a very conservative budgeting practice, because we have been limited in funds that we can spend, so it's been very, very conservative. We've solved a lot of problems, but there are, as you say, challenges ahead of us, and by working together, I think we can meet those challenges head-on and move the town forward. So I look forward to working with this council, and very proud, frankly, of the support and the effort the town council and I have made by working together over the last couple of years to put a budget together that's fiscally responsible and meets the needs of the community. And the sad part is, is that we all wish we had more money and we could do so with less taxes to provide even better quality services for the people, and that's an ongoing struggle, and we'll do everything in our power to do the best we can. With that in mind, today, we're going to be voting on a negotiated contract between the town of Southbridge and the DPW Union, that'll be voted on later in the agenda here, but we are also opening up negotiations with the police department and the fire union, the police union and fire union for ongoing union contract negotiations. The police department, the president of the union and I have been exchanging emails, and we're setting up a, getting ready to set up a date for initial meetings, and there's been elected a new union president for the fire department, and I've been told that he's going to be contacting me shortly to begin negotiations on that as well. Right now, as I've told everybody, we are in the beginning of the budget process, and all department heads are in the process of entering their budgets into our financial system, they're all expected to come in by the 19th. We usually do all the regular town budgets first, and we do the school budget last in the process, to give them as much time as they can to get their budgets ready, because they obviously have the largest budget in town, so they tend to get a little bit more slack in terms of effort to produce that budget, so we're working with the school receiver and their business manager to get that budget done as soon as possible. We have, and the town council we're receiving soon, through the community compact, we received $30,000 to do a facilities management study of the school system, to look at all the physical assets of the school system. I mean by that as all the buildings, to look at what their long-term capital needs are, to develop a plan, a 10-year plan for meeting those needs, and figuring out exactly what upgrades have to be done to all the school buildings. That contract will be going to subcommittee very shortly, but we have selected a vendor for that, the same vendor did the town side buildings, and the contract will be coming for the committee shortly. Also, department heads are now in the process of updating their six-year capital plan budgets, and we're all working on it now, we'll enter those into the system as well. So once they do that, we'll start the budget process, a meeting with all department heads, myself and the finance director, we'll be meeting with all the individual department heads to go through their budgets line by line to see where we can make cuts and where we can save money, and hopefully, sometimes we look at department heads to see if they have any other potential sources of funding other than the regular property tax, so we'll be discussing those as well. Another thing that's going on right now, as I've been working on, as early as today, I've been working on a request for proposals for engineering. As many citizens may know, our animal shelter is in very, very poor shape, and we are looking at replacing that animal shelter, and kind of, we've been giving a state grant, I'm sorry, a community group grant to help us with that. The chairman of the council has been very engaged, and the police chief, we're in the process of developing a request for quotes for engineering to get a design plan for that building, and as soon as that is ready, I'll be sending it to council so they can take a look at that request for quotes as well. That's all I have at this time. Oh, one last thing, on January 29th, I think that people will understand that we've created a task force to deal with the issue of substance abuse. And one of the great things we did last year is we had Chris Heron, who's a former Celtics player, speak to the high school students, and you'll see that later on in the agenda, but I want to mention that January 29th, at 12:30, our middle school students will have an opportunity to hear Mr. Heron speak. And last year, those of the councilors who attended that meeting were extremely impressed in the presentation he gave to the high school. He'll be doing that presentation in middle school, and I'm looking forward to doing everything in our power to educate middle schoolers about the danger of these illegal drugs, and doing everything we can in the terms of prevention. Our children are important to us, and we want to make sure they stay safe, so I think that's going to be a great event, and I thank the town manager's substance abuse council for their support for that event, and also town council for providing the funding. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So any presentations, there is none in this evening? Citizens forum, if anyone wishes to address the council?
Hi, Maureen Doyle, 771 Lubin on Hill, speaking for myself, not for any other group or committee that I'm a part of. Attention, attention, so starts Aldous Huxley's 1962 novel, Island. In the island, in the novel, a minor bird makes a call that warns the citizens of that fictional island repeatedly to pay attention to what would soon befall it. fictional island repeatedly to pay attention to what would soon befall it. We don't have a bird warning us of impending doom, but we have many, we have had many calls to attention. How many times have we, the fictional citizens, the non-fictional citizens of Earth, been asked to pay attention to various aspects of climate change? Late last year, the ICCP warned us of catastrophic changes within 12 years. On December 14th, 2018, just a few weeks ago, a 15-year-old girl addressed the Conferences of the Parties, better known as COP24, in Katowice, Poland. Greta Thunberg had the courage to say what needed to be said and she reinforced her message by organizing a school walkout in her home country, among other actions. Thank you, Greta, for getting the attention of so many to this urgent matter. I hope the attendees listen to your strong voice and will stop trying to solve problems with the same bad ideas and instead pull the emergency brake as you suggested. Now that there is attention, we can realize that we all are important players in this, from large nations and corporations to individual citizens. Let's start 2019 by sending a message as consumers, by using less energy, making wise consumer choices, focusing on the long-term and on local, and by reducing our carbon footprint. Use your civic voice and contact your legislature, legislators and officials, get their attention that this is an important matter. As a town, we can impose a plastic bag ban. Attleboro just did it, 88 towns and cities statewide have. When recycling, make sure that your items will be recycled, rinse out containers and don't contaminate your load. Not too long ago, there was an article about Worcester's contaminated recycling loads. Many people quote-unquote "wish cycle" hoping that their, the item will be recycled. Often that just contaminates the loads, such as adding a dirty disposable utensil or a plastic bag that just jams up the machinery. So, in our recycling, we've had this form that shows you what not to put in. You can also go to casella.com for that list or call 1-800-CASELLA for a complete list of what not to include in your recycle bin. So pay attention to what you are recycling, pay attention to what you need so that you can reduce, and do what you can to reuse things. Climate change, just like contaminated recycling, is all our problem, it deserves all of our attention. Thank you.
Good evening, Mike Marketti, 120 Maria Avenue. I listened to the chairman's announcement and I appreciate that you acknowledged that I did show up at some meetings. I, I do also go on Facebook, I don't see anything wrong with Facebook. But I did, I also, I also attended many of the budget sessions last spring and so did all the counselors. And you're right, the counselors have the final say and all the counselors agreed to this budget and it was a 3% increase. As I said before, I don't have a problem paying my fair share of taxes, absolutely have no problem with that. I know we have many needs in this community. But it seems to me, you know, it's obvious now, you've shifted the tax burden onto single families, two, three families, and you've reduced taxes on commercial properties. And I agree that we have a good, we want to maintain the fire department, we want to maintain the police department, but they also, commercial properties also benefit from having a good police department and a fire department. So, to me, it's, all you really have to do is, is make it even, 3% for everyone. That I don't have a problem with, but to shift it 6% onto me and reduce theirs 3%, that's not equitable and that's why I'm upset with it. It's probably not going to do any good tonight, hasn't done any good, didn't do any good last spring, I guess, but that's my only complaint. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Marketti.
And just to clarify, Mr. Marketti, I, I think my, my point, and I, I really wish, I really do want to speak to you more individually about this, is the fact that when we're asked to set a tax rate, it's at the very possible last moment of the year that we can do it. And to, to make a decision about whether we split a tax rate at that late date without knowing what the cause and effect of that may be was, was my only point. So, I, I do respect your opinion on that and that's why I think it's, it's important that we have that conversation started now about if we, if we do make a decision, we have to look at every town around us that does or does not do a split tax rate. So it's a healthy discussion to have, I look forward to having that with you going forward. Thank you.
Mr. Polowski?
Something you said, John Polowski, 87, old North Woodstock Road. They changed the name of the street when I was away those 20 years, so they added north and I forget where it's placed sometimes. So, you know, there, there is a healthy conversation about the tax on, in the, on the inline community. I think precision would be helpful and where I think there's, I don't know if it's a play with words, but I respectfully disagree that you folks shifted the tax. You didn't, you didn't change anything, you, it has more to do with evaluations. You didn't, you kept it the way it was. What you didn't do is you didn't correct it and that's hard to do because you're bucking tradition. We've been told up here for 10 years or so that we have a single rate. Some of the towns around us benefit well, I don't think it would discourage commerce if we had a split rate, but that's something to discuss. It's nice that at least finally, after a decade, it's being discussed up here, instead of in the parking lot after meetings. Hopefully next year, there'll be a solution. I wouldn't want to see our industrial or commercial properties get hit with something like 50%. I think that might discourage, just at least in terms of appearances. Conversely, I think there's an appearance in the community, because you have different departments in town, but you don't have a public relations office, so to speak, you don't, like, you know, but we don't want a propaganda ministry, right? Everything should be, you know, you, you do a good job at getting the information out there. Something I've been asked a half dozen times in the last month or so, and I don't know the answer, and I hope one of you can answer it, maybe you can't answer it tonight. I was away over 20 years, so I, I don't know what happened to it, but we used to have something called Proposition 2 and 1/2, where a tax couldn't be increased more than 2 and 1/2% without the taxpayers' permission. It was an override of sort. And I don't know if that's disappeared, if that's no longer, but I know a lot of people, including myself, are interested and if one of you can answer that intelligently, I think it would be helpful in the, you know, the conversation. I think if you folks commit to making, at least looking at a split tax, that would be good for, because it's, it's more than, you know, our homes, our businesses, I mean, that's where a lot of people have their entire investment or even the investment of their ancestors, their parents, their grandparents. So, it doesn't look good when we have such a high tax rate. And there's some misinformation out there in the community on why, it's, oh, that landfill thing's being blamed again, but you folks have worked hard to bring prices down and if there's anything online, now, online community, I think is unfair. You do a great job at doing this within meetings, it's people being critical of town employees. We don't always know what's going on in the background. I think it's best if people want to be critical of town employees, I don't mind picking on you guys if it's fair, you know, elected officials, but town employees, we don't know where they're getting orders, we don't know what confidential information can't be shared. So sometimes people make decisions that appear unpopular and they can't give the explanations. They don't want to, it's private. So I think people should be just a little more reluctant because it is a small town, even though, let's say the small, employees don't live in town, it's still, it's their career, so let's, let's just be a little more respectful of that, too. So, thank you for your time, thank you for your service. Someone said you guys are self-serving online and I honestly, even with the counselors I did not get along with at all in the last 10 years ago and some of the, like the landfill fight, I didn't find anybody on the council to be self-serving, trying to advocate their own personal careers or their own personal wealth. That's, that's a, that's a cheap shot when people say that and they may not know that, but I'm someone that's been bugging half of you, you know, your entire time and I really almost am like a unelected, like, I don't know, caretaker, I'm a caretaker, but I keep my eyes on things and I, if one of you guys were crossing the line, I, I would have already told everyone about it and you're not and I appreciate your service and I feel bad that you lose time with your families, so, but, so people should get more involved so you guys don't have to work so hard. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for the public, 2 and 1/2, Proposition 2 and 1/2 is in effect and we do have to abide by it. I'm not, I'm not so well-versed in it, Mr. Polowski, so I'm not going to comment on it, but the implications of 2 and 1/2, we do abide by a 2 and 1/2 growth every year. So it's a 2 and 1/2 growth on assessments and property assessments, so perhaps I'll have Mr. Canoy come forward at a later date to go in depth on it because it's not my area of expertise, but we are bound by the requirements of Proposition 2 and 1/2.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any further citizens wishing to address the council? Any further citizens? Seeing none, move on. Gen IM9, vote to appropriate $150,000 from landfill royalty receipts account number 6790 to the other post-employment benefits OPEB trust account number 8360 as the FY 2019 contribution.
Second.
Counselor Steve?
Yeah, that came up to gen.gov on the 18th. We did, we did vote unanimously to recommend it, although I've, I've always had kind of philosophical objections to putting so much money into OPEB when we have like road issues and so forth, but I will support it because I also understand that we don't want to keep tying up the, the fact that we have such a huge backlog of debt that we need to be covering, it's kind of a catch-22. I would personally rather see it using the roads, but, but I think everybody knows where I stand on that one, so.
If you cared to?
Just briefly, just so people kind of understand in the general public what this is, the employees all get health benefits when they retire, just like they do in many private companies and there's a cost associated with that, with that benefit to employees. All towns throughout Massachusetts have not funded these benefits in the way they should or at least in the way that state law has changed. So, state law has changed the accounting of this to require municipalities to make this more actuarially sound. The town of Southbridge has a huge, many millions of dollars, I don't remember off the top, I had something like $50 million of, of debt in this area and every other town in the state has it as well. We've been paying $250,000 a year from our royalty account from the landfill. This year, you'll see that we're only going down to 150,000 because the landfill is closed and not as many, and not as much funds are coming into that account and soon to be, there'll be, actually, there's no funds coming into the account. We want to make sure that the royalty account has money to deal with future landfill issues. So, me and the chairman have had a great deal of conversation about this and at this time, we feel the $150,000 is a more appropriate number. It is going to have to be a budget issue for the fiscal 2020 budget because we really need to fund this on an, in an operating basis every year because we no longer have the landfill money coming in. So it will be something we discuss quite heavily during the budget process and how to deal with this issue, but it's sound business practices and we have to move forward on this issue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
No.
Motion carries. Gen IM10, vote to approve the transfer of $27,206 from the Southern Wistah County Regional Vocational School District Bay Path Assessment Number 1.945.5650.0.590 to Town Council Reserve Number 1.132.5781 due to reduction in the Southbridge FY 2019 assessment.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, I announced that at last, our last meeting that the Bay Path had sent us the letter with the reduction, we thanked them at that time. My thought was for us to move that into council reserve so that if we have any unforeseen, one, for an accounting purpose so that it just doesn't sit in an account, and two, due to the fact that we've expended some money under, out of Town Council Reserve that will be available in case it's needed for an emergency later in the year. So that was my thought process behind that. Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This did come before Education Human Services Subcommittee last week and I appreciate that Subcommittee Vice Chair, Counselor John Daniel, ran the meeting. I did have a few things to say about this and I'll reiterate tonight that I think it's a, it's a fair move to put this into Town Council Reserves, but I'd also like to keep it in the back of everyone's mind that if there are educational needs that come forward, this money should be the first look that we give to doing anything we need to supplement funding. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, unanimously, present. Item 11, vote to approve the town's right of first refusal of parcels 041-004-0001 and 041-003-00001, 268 Dresser Hill Road with 32.87 acres classified in Chapter 61A and three acres excluded.
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Steve?
Yeah, that was also on the last gen.gov meeting. They're talking about a property, it's called the West Property, where they want to put up a solar farm, or solar array, I should say, because they're not farms. And Will told us, talked to us about it at that meeting, he commented that he didn't think there was any use that the town would have for it, it's a backlot that doesn't really have any access to anything. At the moment, if I'm not mistaken, it's pretty much, it's, it's into Chapter 61A, but I think most of it is actually open space, is open, not forested at the moment. And there's, there's about, there's what, three or four other solar arrays that are going on in that same area, on, mostly on the other side of the street. So there's a whole bunch of stuff coming down the pike from that area. Mostly it's 100, I guess it's mostly hayfields and he was commenting that they will, they end up having to pay five years, five years of paid rollback taxes based on their uses, which hayfields, which is what it is now, is $115 an acre. So, we did vote unanimously not to exercise first refusal.
Counselor Manna?
I have a question, thank you. So, I understand the process of the right to first refusal. My concern is though, more solar farms going up. That's a huge concern of mine, only because I've been hearing talk, and I haven't done the research on it, but like the, the towns aren't going to be getting credits for it and there's certain things, I, I'm just worried about it. It's not as beneficial as was made, appeared to have been made back in the day. And I'm worried that we're going to end up with property in town and we're just going to be stuck with all these solar panels. I'm, I'm worried about that, so it, I don't think it's very beneficial to our town, so. Anyways, that's my comment on it.
Any further discussion? Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Please excuse me, I don't know about the frogs on my throat tonight, but we do see these come forward once, once in blue moon and I'd just like to make sure that I'm perfectly clear with what we're doing here tonight because the wording is always very vague with these rights of first refusal. If we're approving the right of first refusal, are we, or are we not exercising the right of first refusal? Because there are recommendations that are quite explicit in the assessor's memo and it would be nice if it were clear within the wording of the motion.
Counselor Steve?
I actually think he's right, that's a good point. I think the way that it's written, it says we would be, I would say that we would be exercising first refusal rights the way that's written. I think you had a point there. I, I didn't catch that, but that's a good point. And I, I think the intent is not to. I mean, I, I would, I would love to be able to do it if we had the money, but we don't.
Mr. Chairman, it, it would make sense to me that per the assessor's recommendation on the backside of his memo, we should be waiving the right.
So waive that right?
Yes, sir.
I think you are correct because you're waiving your right of first refusal.
I'll make that amendment.
Okay. So amendment?
Yep.
It's what, vote to waive?
Yes.
The town's right of first refusal? Counselor Adams?
This must, this may be just some wording, but on the packet itself, on page 2, it talks about the town that likes not to exercise the right of first refusal.
talks about the town likes not to exercise the right of first refusal, it's right, first refusal.
That's right.
So is that something we need to put into the
That's what we, that's what we just did.
Okay.
By saying we're waiving it, we're, we're letting them go through with the project that they're working.
All right, word, got it.
Yes, yes. Was there a second?
Uh-huh. Counselor Manna?
Thank you. I understand totally what Counselor Nash is saying, but in the past, when we voted on these, we've never said in the statement, it was a yes vote meant that we wouldn't exercise our right to the property, to buy the property. Am I right?
Okay. If you could, we have legal counsel in, in the chamber right now.
Is he here?
I'm going to take a brief, quick
I think that would be good.
recess, just to ask him
Just to get, be clear. Yeah.
I think we probably could do it either way, but I think we could do it either way. Solar, solar arrays taking over the town, essentially. We have, I, I don't know if we can come up with some sort of a, a town policy, maybe I'll throw it on gen gov and see if we can start throwing around some ideas for a town policy about, about controlling solar fields as much as we can. I mean, there's a lot of state law involved here, and we'd have to be probably fairly careful and probably need to get some help to do it. But I know, I know Charlton did throw an proposal on their town meeting to, to put moratoriums on it, and I don't remember what happened to it or not, off the top of my head, but, but there's got to be something we can do. We can't keep chopping down our trees to put these things all over the place, so.
So if I may respond to that, Mr. Chair?
Counselor Manna?
Thank you. This is one thing that Counselor Steves and I actually agree on.
Yes, it is.
So, but, um, yeah, you're right. It's not like they're covered under, you know, the Dover Amendment or anything, because they certainly aren't educational, and they're not religious. So I think it's something that the town should be able to take some control over, and that's why it comes to us.
Right.
And I think we could actually say no, so.
Right. All right. We'll refer that topic to general government, however, the motion before us is the right of first refusal, so. Any further discussion on this agenda? Okay. Roll call, Madam Secretary, given the nature of this.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Unanimous, all present. Item twelve, vote to ratify the purchase, purchase service agreement between the town of Southbridge and Burton Engineering, the amount of $2,850 to provide occupant loads for town-owned buildings.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Yep.
Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This was at the PPP subcommittee meeting, and it did come up to council, it was unanimous recommendation. However, we wanted to add to that according to the contract, because this is very open when it says town-owned buildings. So we wanted to add in
Oh, right.
according to the contract.
Right.
And also, I'm not sure, because I don't have the contract on me, what I had at PPP, but I had a question on their item number four, when it came to the Southbridge Senior Center, and the cops and kids room, I was told that was where they, now, I'm very familiar with cops and kids program and what goes on at the senior center, but I was told, I'm like, the cops and kids room, I'm thinking, what's that? So I was told that that was like the utility room where they kept the supplies. So if that's the case, then that doesn't need to be on there, because that's not a room that's being used. See what I'm saying? If it's just a utility room, a storage room, then it doesn't need to be, or it's labeled incorrectly. I, I'm just, we discussed that.
Yeah, we did.
You remember Counselor Steves?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so, but it definitely did say, we did recommend that we asked that it was according to the contract
Okay.
be added on to, for the agenda.
Okay, so you want to add an amendment to that for town-owned buildings
Yes.
per contract?
According to the contract, yes.
Second.
Because, just saying town-owned buildings, well.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, so we have an amendment before us. Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment? Okay, now we have this as amended. Is there any further discussion on this?
Middle line motion?
On the underline. Yes. Tom, answer.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. And my understanding is, and I'll let the building inspector, or the health inspector answer this clearly, but my understanding of the cops and kids room, it's at the back of the community center. It's a room that has a beautiful mural on it, and I think that's the room they're talking about. It's not a storage facility room, it's an actual room where the children meet, and I, I've been in the room, so I'm very familiar with it. There's a beautiful mural, I don't know if you've ever seen
Is it the educational room, where they
Yes, I think it's, I don't know, I think it's a meeting room, I don't know if you'd call it an educational room, maybe Andy could give us a clearer answer, but I've been in that room, I know that's where they meet, and it has, you know
I don't have a familiarity with this, that's how they just informed me that there is an actual room where the pe, the cops and kids congregate and meet. So it is an assembly space. It's not just storage.
Okay, well, I know there is a room where they actually meet. I, I totally understand that, but when we were discussing this, you remember Counselor Steves, at the meeting? It was a storage they were talking about, unless they took it off, I don't know, but I know there's a room where they meet, I know there's a room where they have the educational pieces, I know there's the gym where they play their basketball, do their hockey, whatever they do. So I, I get all that, but, okay, that's all.
Thank you.
Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I think that, is that, maybe I'm wrong here, cops and kids room is back by the bathroom, the men's bathroom, in the back area, where they actually have tables and chairs and, and air conditioning back there. You've got the, because I'm looking at this, you've got the gym, senior center where Pat sits, exercise room, which is in the far back, and then the cops and kids room, I'm assuming is where the, the bathroom, the male's, men's bathroom is located at. Actually, you can go right from Mike's office right into that back room, I think it's a, that's a classroom.
Okay, I remember, thank you, Counselor Adams, but I, I do remember, Mr. Chair, through you, that when we were discussing it at the PPP meeting, there was the storage room on here, and I thought that's what people were talking about. Am I losing my mind, Counselor Steves?
We did talk about that. I think there was some, there was some confusion over which room was, was which, yeah.
Because they're not labeled, they're not labeled at the, the senior center at all, so.
All right, well, one at a time, man. Okay. Counselor DePietro, did you have something?
Just very quickly, Mr. Chair, to address Counselor Manna's concerns, the question at hand is as far as load, not occupancy. Occupancy is a question for the town inspector, and I'm sure he would agree that this is an area that would be defined as an assembly area as defined in, in the Mass Building Code. So if that's the question you're asking, that's not what we're voting on. It's actually loading, physical loading, to my understanding, not occupancy.
No, this is for occupancy.
This is occupancy.
Occupancy.
Fifty-five or one.
Not the way it's written, Mr. Chair.
The, the agenda item is occupant loads. That's the agenda item, occupant loads. Occupant loads.
Well, that's a question for the building inspector and Mass Building Code. Why are we voting on that? I don't understand.
Mr. Pelletier?
This is a, every place of assembly requires that we assign an occupant load to it based on the building code. In order to do that, a engineer goes in, determines the floor space of any assembly area, takes out any fixed objects, does all the math on that, and supplies it to us. We then approve or deny it. However, to do this, we need a contract. The reason it's before this board is because I can't approve contracts. This board is the only one that can approve contracts.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
All due respect to Burton Engineering, and I'm sure I can do the math as, as easy as, as any of us could, it's square footage versus occupancy with exits included. I don't understand why we're spending money that the building inspector's well-versed in, to pull out a Mass Building Code, I'm lost.
Because the building inspector doesn't have the certifications required, a PE. The building code is specific as to who can do these things. It was actually supposed to be submitted with all plans when you build a building, and we are making sure that happens from here forward, but many of our occupancy spaces don't have one posted, and we don't have a history of one. So we accept it from the engineer, and we either approve it or say you didn't consider that, or didn't consider that. But it's, it's done by engineers. We are requiring the restaurants and town to do the same thing. There's multiple things for consideration, fixed objects, are we doing tables and chairs? Are we doing standing room only? Are we doing, there's, there's a whole lot of different factors that go into calculating an occupant load.
Thank you. Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Also, the Evelyn Petrelli Room also came up. Shouldn't that be on here?
The which room?
Evelyn Petrelli Room, that's not on here.
The, any space that has an occupant load of 50 reverts to a B use.
Okay.
So an occupant load of 50 or less, no, of less than 50 is not an assembly use, it becomes a B use space.
Okay, so that it has a
So
fifty or less, this room?
I haven't been in there in a while, and I haven't measured it, so, but I would assume, I've done interviews in there, I believe, and it's, it's a pretty small space.
Okay, because that, that did come up at the meeting, so we want, I want to make sure, so.
I'd have to, I'd have to measure it to confirm that, but my sense is it's a pretty small place.
Oh, measure tape measure, come on.
The foot thing.
We all set?
I'm good.
Any further discussion? Okay, so the motion before us, vote to ratify purchase service agreement between Town of Southbridge and Burton Engineering, the amount of $2,850 to provide occupant loads for town-owned buildings per, according to contract. Correct?
Yes, so moved.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Oh, did we already have a first and a second on that motion? Okay, sorry.
Unanimous, all present. Item thirteen, vote to accept the Mass Office, Executive Office of Public Safety grant of $4,354 for the Student Awareness of Fire Education Safe Grant, and $2,600 grant for the Senior Awareness of Fire Education Safe Grant.
Second.
Discussion, Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This also was, I just, at, discussed at the December 10 PPP meeting, and both of these items for this one agenda item was unanimous.
Thank you. Chief, Norman.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody, council chair, and council and town manager. This effort here is again repeated over the last several years for the town of Southbridge. The Student Awareness of Fire Education Program, which is called the SAFE Program, provides grants to local fire departments to teach fire and life and safety to childrens in, in our school system. The program teaches students to also recognize the dangers of fire and, and the dangers and the fire hazards of tobacco products through 23 key safety behaviors taught in appropriate ways to each of the grade levels in the school system. Since the SAFE Program began, we have been attending, we've been attending all of our public school and parochial schools, and even including our, several of our child daycare facilities with this education grant process. The SAFE Program is, is also broken down into the Senior SAFE. This, the Senior SAFE Program, which aims to reduce older adult fire deaths through fire and life safety education. We currently do speak several times a year to our senior citizens at 150 Main Street and 60 Charlton Street, and any other event that we get asked to go to. The combination of both of these grants will allow our department to continue to serve the children and seniors in our community. SAFE Coordinator Gary Peck has worked diligently, diligently over the years on these programs. His successful grant submission is a great testament to his dedication, along with our departments, in protecting and serving the citizens and children of Southbridge. I really highly recommend that you guys approve this.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item fourteen, vote to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and LB Communications in the amount of $25,950 for a project manager to complete the development of Central Communication Center for the Police and Fire Department.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Chief, which chief is taking the lead here? Chief Woodson, good evening, Chief.
Good evening, I could volunteer. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Mr. Town Manager. It's kind of been a work in progress for quite some time now. The fire chief and I, when we first started, was actually Chief DeFranzo, and when we realized the magnitude and the scope of this job and, and the area of expertise that was going to be needed to accomplish this mission of combining the police and fire communication centers, we realized that it's, it's probably a lot more technically, a technical job than the fire chief and I could handle. We, so we looked and sought the services of an expert in the industry. As far as LB Communications and Mr. Katie, I've personally worked with him, I know the fire chief not speaking for him. We went over this at the PPP. I've worked with him on other projects. When we talked about regionalizing in Southbridge, that's actually where I first met, Mr. Katie, and he's worked similar, many similar projects as far as police-fire dispatch centers, completely gutting an area, stripping it down to the studs, and rebuilding it from scratch, the radio communication, so when my people are on the street, when the fire chief's people are on the street, you hit a button and we can communicate, that's pretty much turnkey operation, that's what Mr. Katie's assuring us will happen. Very confident in standing here that I, I believe that's what will happen. I've had no complaints or any issues from any other previous police chiefs anyway that have used Mr. Katie, so I highly recommend that we accept this contract.
Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This, too, came up at the PPP, as Chief Woodson stated, and this was unanimous. And one of the concerns was, was there going to be any interruption, and we were well-assured that there would be no interruptions at all, so.
If I could throw you, Mr. Chair, as far as the citizens of the community, zero. There'll be zero downtime. As you all know, we're a 24/7 operation, no need to, anybody to go into a panic or anything like that. When you call 911 or call a business line, there'll be some way to answer it. You won't even know this work's going on.
Okay. No further? Chief, I apologize, because I had another meeting that saved even. Do you have an estimated timeline of completion for this project?
Well, we hope, we've kind of been shooting for the last, you know, two years or so to July 1st of 2019 as a jump point. Will all, everybody be up and running and trained by then? There may be some overlap, so I'm hoping to have everything up and running by October, but as far as the bulk of the work, the nuts and bolts, and most of the training, July 1st of 2019, but we are going to be requesting to hire two additional dispatches for July 1st, so therefore, we might not be able to get them trained until after July 1st if the council approves. So that might be a cause of a little bit of delay, but not, not much.
And do you have a timeline of anticipated start of construction of that dispatch?
Tonight, hopefully, Mr. Katie, if he, oh, he's in the audience, soon, very soon. Soon, very soon. We plan on talking with Mr. Katie as we walk out of the meeting tonight, and we'll be jumping in very soon.
Thank you, Chief. Any further discussion? Council Nash.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman through you. I do apologize I wasn't able to attend PPP because it was the same night as Fire Station Building Committee, which caught my attention. So, I wasn't part of the discussion. Minutes haven't been made available as yet, unfortunately. But I do wonder, because the backup material does allude to your solicitation of three quotes with only one response. Other vendors did not respond to the request.
Well, correct, well, if I could through you, Mr. Chair. We put out three quotes, three requests for quotes. Mr. Katie actually responded with a hard copy quote. Someone else responded, another company via email just saying that they would look at the request and get back to us, and then another person didn't even respond at all. So, we solicited three quotes, only one actually gave us a number. We got two responses, but one price from three different vendors.
Thank you. I was just looking for that affirmation because that's what was stated and provided in the backup, and I'm just a little concerned we're going to spend $26,000 with one sole proposal once again. That's always something that's a little bit troubling to me. I have every bit of confidence that the chief and the vendor are going to make this happen, but we really need to get three quotes on these large dollar amounts. Thank you.
Well, yeah, I think the project manager is the smaller dollar. I agree on the bigger project itself. It's the project management. It could be because of the scope of the project. It's not as huge communication as some projects maybe. But I knew, I know conversations with the chief that they were going to do their due diligence to seek out those quotes. And I do know that I had a conversation with retired chief in town, and he spoke very highly of this individual as well, so confident in the abilities to get it done. Council Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. I will say, it was a great brief you guys gave the other day. I appreciate the operational plan that you sent to us later on. So, you know, very excited to get this thing going, especially bringing two firefighters back into the daily business instead of dispatching.
Four firefighters.
Four firefighters. Sorry about that. Four firefighters. Thank you.
Anything further? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. Keep us apprised of how that's going, okay, Chief? Thank you. Item 15, vote to ratify the agreement between the Town of Southbridge and Central Massachusetts Regional Plan and Commission, CMRPC, in the amount of $4,050 to prepare the Town's FY2019 CDBG grant application. Is there a motion?
Submove.
We have a motion as second. Discussion, Council Steve.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that this money is actually not coming from tax money. It's coming from CDBG funds, so.
Council Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. So, this went through the PND Subcommittee, voting unanimously for it. Yes, it's correct. This $4,050 is coming through CDBG funds. I believe it's $1,050 is coming from ours, from meetings that you attended, right, Ms. Scrivens, and a few other things. So, it brings the cost down.
Yeah. It's actually, because of our membership in CMRPC, we get 12 hours a year. And then, as staff attends meetings, it increases the number of hours that we're eligible for.
Thank you. This is to prepare the application for the CDBG funds. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present. Vote to accept the CDBG FY2019 grant application for the total amount of $825,000, entertaining a motion to vote.
Somewhat.
Thank you. For the proposed activity and associated preliminary estimates. Code Enforcement Officer, Inspections Department, $27,000. Code Enforcement Officer, Health Department, $30,000. Commercial Improvement, Sign On and Facades, $60,000. Main Street Reconstruction and Traffic Signal Work, $590,931. Administration of $117,000, 069, for a total of $825,000. Is there a motion?
Somewhat.
Second. Okay, we have a motion as second discussion. Council Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. This went into great detail from public meetings to, it's now, it's on YouTube through the cable access channel. I posted it online myself, the meetings that we did have about this, went into great detail. There are some concerns, I know budgetary wise, that we have discussed with this money, but at this point in time, this is something that has been going on for some time. But, like I said, we'll discuss that at budget time about some of these positions. But if anybody's got a chance to look at it, this is, you're talking about the code enforcement officer, the code enforcement officer for health and inspections, the awnings, some awnings to help some local businesses. Also, the Main Street reconstruction, I believe it's from, was it South Street? I think that was the idea. South Street all the way down to Everett. Pine to Everett, thank you. And also redoing all the lights, so they sync with video. And from that point on, it was unanimous vote, so.
Council DePietro had his hand up first. Did you have something?
Oh, Mr. Chair, just two very quick questions, and I've seen several of these issues go through various subcommittees, and all of a sudden, they're all kind of combined into one. My only two questions is, are regarding the reconstruction and traffic signal work on Main Street, how much of that is actually hands-on and how much of that is preliminary study? And number two, the grant, are we matching any of these funds? Or, I don't see any of that language in here either.
There is no match in this grant. There's no requirement for match. It's strictly grant.
There may have to be utilized with chapter, chapter 90 funds, I believe it is.
Possibly.
It may.
So, this is just an application to see if we will even qualify to get the funds for that. The whole project right now has only been preliminary estimated by my department, and I don't have to, I'm going to have to read the number back off, but the preliminary total estimate for that section with basically almost everything included is $1.5 million, including engineering. So, it's only a portion of it. That area is only a portion being able to be funded by CDBG because that downtown area starts at basically CVS and goes to Everett Street. So, it's only, or in that general vicinity. So, only a part of the whole overall project can even be funded with CDBG funds. But yes, some of this is engineering. This is way above the scope of engineering that we could do in-house. We're not doing a lighting upgrade in-house that requires professionals, engineers that are trained in lighting technology, meaning streetlight technology, and it has to be a certain way and format that that's done. So, some of it will be engineering, but at this time, what I'm proposing is the engineering will go out for a bid, and the engineering will be funded with chapter 90 money, so that we'll be ahead of the schedule, so that when the money comes in for the CDBG, we'll be able to do CDBG construction money and chapter 90 money to get the whole project done.
If I may, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much for that, Heather. And the only reason I ask, and I'm not hassling you here, and obviously, if you would have to break this out, it'd be about 15, 16 pages, we couldn't address this evening. But it's just funny, it goes from Subcommittee to finally hits council and numbers all. When you try and scrunch it into this one number is why I ask.
Yeah.
And especially for the record, because obviously, this was a number we certainly discussed in the beginning, and I know you couldn't do it for this, but if you're talking about this one little section, all right, I get it now.
It's a section of the road. A section of the, not the whole project can be done with CDBG funds, just a portion. It's about half of it, so really, that almost comes out to half of the construction cost. So, it really actually works out quite nicely. Those all numbers and what is exactly included in the project still has to be worked out when the final engineering is done. We know what we want done. We'd like to have the lights addressed. We want the condition of the road addressed, especially down from CVS down. We want to prevent that from happening in the future. We're looking at new crosswalk signals so that they're the most up-to-date, so that we're not replacing them, and they're addressing things like having the audible noise for blind people and things of that nature, and a countdown clock, so people understand what our crosswalks actually mean. Doing road safety, there was some, a road safety audit that was done in that section that will address some of the safety concerns of where your crossing is. All of those things can be done, can be looked at and addressed, what, how much we want to do and how much we want to spend in the project. Handicap ramps, sidewalks, all of those things can be taken out piece by piece, depending on where the estimates are coming in.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. I'm sorry I didn't make this meeting. I was working, so I apologize. But I am so thrilled to see Main Street reconstruction and traffic signal work on here. It is even funny. I'm just like ecstatic, so, thank you. I, we're not going to like go through the river and through the woods.
It's going to take a little while.
But we're going to work on it, right?
We're working on it.
Because, I mean, many people have still complained to me, so I'm really happy about that. It's the little things. Thank you.
Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. Just so the public knows, that this money can't be just used anywhere in the town. It has to be allocated for certain areas of the core center of the town. And the brief that we received a few weeks ago, up to present day, it gave us maps of the areas that it can be used for, and so, pretty happy about this right now. So, thank you, the economic team, DPW, for all the hard work. Thank you.
Any further discussion from council? Mr. Marquetti.
Mike Marquetti, 120 Maria Avenue. I also attended the meeting last week. The reason I attended is because I was asking that some money be set aside for Lower Morris Street. When you go from about Maria Avenue, where I live, going down to the Morris Street Field and the Community Center, where we vote, and Morris Street, where children play, there is no sidewalk going down there, and it can be a very hazardous, unsafe situation when you're trying to walk down there, and you're walking in the road and cars are coming up Morris Street. So, I asked that some of the money be found through these grants to fund a sidewalk down there. I did contact from somebody from the Mass DOT, and he suggested something through the Complete Streets Program. It's something that he says the Town of Southbridge has not applied for since 2016. However, the Morris Street is in the target area of what they're talking about, the CDBG grants. So, if it's in the target area, you could either use the Complete Streets, but as far as I'm concerned, you could also use CDBG grants, and that is a very dangerous area to walk, and I would like to see a sidewalk down there, especially since a lot of kids are walking down there, and I've seen how safe it can be. I've also walked down there. The, also, these grants could also be used for safety issues too, I believe. So, it's something you might want to consider going in the future when it comes to needs for the fire department and the police department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marquetti. Council Nash.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman through you. Just a quick note, that much of this material is available on Town's website in regards to the public hearing that was held on Wednesday, January 9. If you can't find it, contact your counselors. It's all public information. There's some really nice synopses, explanations of what this grant application would be for. Three people attended the meeting, aside from a few of us counselors, including Mr. Marquetti and two members of the Redevelopment Authority. So, time and again, people like to say things online, but they don't like to actually get the facts, and the facts are here for you. And don't hesitate to ask if you can't find the information. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we'll definitely take a look at future funding for that area and have it referred back to the DPW Plan and Development to review that Maria Morris Street and see what impact that could have. Any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present. Item 17, vote to ratify amendment request change order number two from GCG Associates Incorporated for Additional Engineering Oversight Services for Phase Two of the Central Street Parking Lot Project, increasing the contract by $36,765, with all services to be completed by December 31, 2019.
Submove.
Motion as second. Council Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This also went through PND unanimously voted on, in favor of. This money is to be used to extend the contract itself through December because of the weather, because of some of the other issues that we had. Also, correct, Ms. Scrivens?
Sorry, this is actually for Phase Two.
Oh, part of Phase Two, sorry. Thank you.
I think what you're referring to was approved at the last.
Was the last one. Yes, you're right. Sorry.
Any further discussion on this one?
Yeah.
Councilwoman. Man.
So, what was the reason for the increase by $36,765?
It's actually not, it's kind of a new contract, but we're extending his old contract. We requested two other quotes from two different, two other engineering firms, and we didn't get an answer. We didn't get a quote. So, rather than create a new contract for GCG, we're extending the contract that he has now for the FY17 grant.
So, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Councilman.
You're just increasing? You're just increasing to extend it?
Yeah, it's an amendment to his original contract.
So, shouldn't it read somewhere in here about that? Because it just says increasing the contract, and to me, it's like, whoa.
So, basically, in the backup, they currently have an agreement with the Town of Southbridge for Engineering Oversight Services for Central Street Parking Lot for Phase One. So, they're already doing the oversight for Phase One. They went to bid or looked out for additional oversight contracts for an additional party, and they're extending the agreement for them to complete Phase Two of the grant.
Right. But it doesn't make, if they had Phase One.
They have Phase One.
Okay. I get that.
Yep.
And then, there was a separate contract that should have been put out. Well, that was put out. Was it put out? And you didn't get three bids? Is that what it was?
Our request for quotes was put out.
Your request for quotes was put out.
We called.
So, this is a separate, this would be separate. It wouldn't be the same. It's a different.
No.
Because they requested other bids. So, I'm confused.
Council Adams.
Thank you. To answer Counselor Man's question, hopefully, it can answer for you. When it came to PND, we went ahead and approved it, but we came to find out that the Town Manager had a policy in place to find out, find two more quotes, correct? So, what we did was we waited, instead of going on our last Town Council meeting to have this approved, we waited just to hear back from these two quotes. Obviously, it didn't happen, and then it just moved forward. But it had been approved through PND previously.
Approved to come up to council?
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Because nothing's approved at the Subcommittee level.
Right.
That's binding.
Yeah.
I guess, you know, I don't, maybe I'm just not getting that.
Counselor Man. Do you want me to? I think I know.
Maybe I'm just, because you got Phase One and you got Phase Two, you needed bids on Phase One and you needed bids on Phase Two. So, to me, in my mind, they're separate.
So, I'll just try to clarify it a little bit. So, in terms of 30B, which is the procurement law, it actually doesn't require us to go out to bid for engineering services. We did do that anyway, because we want, on the first phase, we worked with the engineering firm that did the preliminary design for Central Street Parking Lot, and we asked GCG, and GCG gave us the lower quote, so we went with them. And then, to do Phase Two, it really makes even less sense to go out for bid for a new engineer who's already very familiar and has been working on Phase One. And in fact, Phase One has been extended because of the weather in the fall. It's been extended, that contract, to June 30th. So, this Phase Two is going to start immediately. So, now, there's going to be overlap between Phase One and Phase Two, so it really, it would make very little sense to have another engineering firm. But we just kind of did our due diligence, and we went out and actually worked with Heather and did ask two other firms if they wanted to bid on it, and they said no. So, just to save on the paperwork, we're just amending the contract that we had with GCG to cover Phase Two.
So, it was.
Instead of creating a new one.
So, if I may, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind. So, it's not required under law for Phase Two to be bid out?
Actually, engineering services aren't required to be bid.
Okay. So, that's what was confusing me.
Okay.
Because you got Phase One, you do the bid, then Phase Two. So, to me, that's two separate things, but what you're telling me is that the, okay. Okay. But shouldn't it say, like, say that somewhere in this agenda item? I mean, I don't know. Because it just says increasing, and to me, that's what caught me, increasing.
No, I understand you. I understand your point.
Because of, huh? What's that?
It's an amendment request.
Yeah, it's an amendment to the change, request change order.
Because the scope is actually changing. So, it's, probably, that might have been the better wording.
Yeah, it's the same contract, so. I understand your concerns, but I don't see the.
Oh, maybe, could it just say amending the contract instead of increasing?
Well, we are also.
No, you're increasing it. It's fine the way it is. Yep.
Because of the, or could we add because of the change to the scope of work or something? I mean, do it.
No, the.
Okay. Doesn't matter.
I understand your position.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just.
I think, yeah.
Sorry.
Council Steve.
I just have a quick question to you over there, Rosemarie. I've been in that section of the parking lot repeatedly, so is that, is that part of the parking lot that's closest to Central? Is that going to get paved in the spring? Because it desperately needs it.
Yes, yes. Yes, yes. Paving, yeah, they, I don't know if that was the plan all along. I don't recall. But yes, that's what's going to happen now.
Okay, because I know they were doing work until basically the last possible minute there, and then they kind of put a patch in there, and it's...
Right.
Not in good shape, but...
Right. We had such a rainy fall that it just really delayed this project.
Right, okay.
And I think, in approving the contract extension, it really does address that. It's Phase One, Phase Two. So I think it's, we're just approving the contract.
Yeah, my apologies. For some reason, I was thinking the other one, that we just approved.
No, that's fine. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Counsel DePietro?
Mr. Chairman, I want to respectfully abstain.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? One abstention. Counselor DePietro abstains. Thank you. Item eighteen, votes to ratify the speaking contract between the Town of Southbridge and Speaker Chris Heron, doing business as Heron Talks, presented to the student assembly at grade six through eight, Southbridge Middle High School, in the amount of three thousand dollars plus seventy-four dollars for ground transportation.
So moved.
Discussion? Counsel Daniel?
I'd just like to say that I'm very pleased that the town manager's substance advisory council was able to get Mr. Heron. He's a marvelous speaker. I think the kids are going to really take to what his message is, what he has to say. And we're, we are fortunate to get him to come in on somewhat short notice. So I'm pleased to support this, this article.
Thank you. Counsel Amanda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Thank you, Counsel Daniel, for, one of my questions to Counsel Nash was, why is this on our agenda? Because it's a school, and you explained it because of the substance abuse.
Right.
So, thank you very much. Because that was a question of mine, so.
Yep. And additionally, because we have a policy that all contracts for services come before council, that agreement that was presented by this group clearly stated contract for services, so that's why we had to bring it here.
Right. So, but, school and town are separate, and that's what, like, confused.
Okay, I understand. Okay, thank you. I missed your question. Okay. All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I too am very pleased to see this come forward because I'm really counting down the days to January twenty-ninth, because Heron made quite an impact last year, as the town manager said during town manager's announcements. But what's more, this dollar amount was under the free cash that was allotted to the substance abuse program, the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, all told. So it's, it's a lot of money. It's money that I think is going to be well spent, and since it was money appropriated by town council for that program, it makes sense. But I also could understand where Counsel Amanda's question regarding the schools. So again, this is town council money for the town, use for the substance program, and this will be exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? All present. Nineteen, vote to approve the establishment of a curbside advisory committee to the town council in accordance with Chapter Two, Section four dash four of the town charter. Committee will consist of seven members, which will include two councils appointed by the council chair, one of whom shall act as the chairperson, the director of inspection services, one member of the board of health, of whom shall be appointed by the board of health to serve as their representative, and three citizens recommended by the curbside committee chair, subject to confirmation by the town council. This advisory committee will periodically update the town council and will be effect until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Discussion? Counsel Amanda?
I guess I might have a loop because I've just been that busy, and I apologize, like, for the last year. So what is a curbside committee, if I may not sound?
Okay. So, we've had, as everybody's aware of, we negotiated settlement with Casella. Of that agreement, they would agree to curbside collection for a period of five years and three months, I believe it was. And at that time, when we voted that settlement, we very clearly said that we had to address what we would do as a town in the future. So we didn't want to kick the can down the road, so that this committee would be established to look at what options there are for curbside collection.
Oh, okay.
So, Counsel Adams is very adamant and wants to take the lead in this, with Counsel Steves, to move this along so that they can report back to the council, what is this going to look like, so that we can prepare. If it's a budget issue on our end, how do we prepare for that? If it goes out to the residents, how do they prepare for it? Is it a combination of, do we have to secure land if we want to do a transfer station? So all those things are on the table. So that's the reason for that, and it's for...
Well, that makes much more sense to me now, because I'm thinking curbside and somebody just going out and just, like, looking at the trash.
No, no.
But no, thank you for being proactive on this. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Counsel Adams? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just, just so everybody knows, this whole committee is nothing but for us to advise the town council. That's it. Give town council, our communities, multiple options to help us out. I know it sounds early, but if taxes are involved, or two-and-a-half percent override is involved, it could be a mess. And we almost found that out last month, how bad it could have been for our community. So that's why we're doing it now, and we're planning for the future of our own town. Thank you.
Counsel Steves?
Just to reiterate kind of what he said, is that one of the things that I think we saw back in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, when the last contract with Casella was approved, we didn't put, the council at the time did not put any plans into effect to actually prepare for now. And they should have. Well, now we're going to prepare for five years from now. We have to, because we don't want to be stuck in the mess that we, we were in, and that we could have been seriously, in some serious trouble if things had gone the wrong way. We want to prevent that as much as possible.
Any further, Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. No one's taken the time to develop any sort of mission statement or set parameters for the development of this committee that I've seen. There's nothing in the packet. There's been a lot of chatter. There's been private, not private, conversations. Nothing in subcommittee. Not a statement by the chair and the PND chair tonight. So I won't be supporting this without something that's a little more concrete. The mission of this council is definitely to do the good work of this community. And with a council of seven, I don't see a lot of value in establishing this without a very clear set of parameters that the council can vote on. I have everything but, including respect and trust in the counselors, but this is, it's just words when we're speaking them into the microphone here tonight without anything to look at. Thanks.
I like Counsel Adams.
So I respect Counsel Nash's opinion on this. That's what the committee's going to do. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Again, you have no parameters with which to work, so you're establishing a committee that has no charge, except for what you say here. It's composed of certain individuals. We're going to take the director of inspection services.
Counsel Nash, we can wait five years and three months from now, if you'd like.
You can play politics, or you can do what you need to do.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
And make good use of the town manager's department head's time by being very explicit with what this town council is about to vote on, and you have not done that. That is my point.
It's a point. I appreciate your point. I guess we're in waters where we want to establish some sort of advisory committee with a clear cut. I think the expectation as council chair, that charge would be given by myself and work with the council subcommittee chairman to develop and make sure that they report back periodically. So I guess the expectation would be that we have to start somewhere. So it's set a committee with a clear-cut chair. And right now, Counselor Adams and Counselor Steves have discussed their interest in doing this, and given the parameters, or the makeup of the council with seven councils now, we have a lot on our plate, but they're willing to take that on. Discussions with them were that they wanted to see this before us to establish that committee. Then it's incumbent on us. No different than setting up the fire station building committee. When it was set up through the very beginning, it's like, here you go, you're a fire station building committee, and go out and figure something out. I guess, perhaps, at the onset, you could say, okay, what's the clear-cut charge? I have the utmost faith in the two councils that wish to participate in this, that they will provide, knowing how we have operated in the past six months that I've been council chair, that I have no doubt that they will have probably a mission statement to be reviewed by this council within, within a month for a charge as to move forward, because it is an important decision. So let's see what they do within the next thirty days that they bring back. And at any time, if we decide that, hey, it's not going to work, and we need to relook at this advisory committee, then we'll do that at that point. But I understand your point. Counsel Amanda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. You already have members appointed to this?
No, but they had expressed their decisions for that right now.
Well, I totally respect what Counsel Nash said, and I totally get what he's getting at. I am happy to see you all being proactive. And, no, it wasn't discussed. I guess that's why I asked, too. But seven members, which will include two counselors appointed by you.
Yep.
Director of inspection services, one member of the board of health, three citizens. It's, I don't know. I'm going to support this, of course, but it's, and I'm very glad that people are being proactive on this. And I totally respect what Counsel Nash said. But I think it's going to be difficult to get, I don't know. We have so many committees. I don't want to see another book on the shelf. I don't want to see a collection of cobwebs. It's just like, it's tiring.
I totally agree with you there.
You get the same people over and over, which I totally respect, but it's so hard to get community involvement. And I'm just like, it's tiring. So, that's all.
I understand that. But to say that this is the first anybody heard about it, I'd mention there at least three consecutive council meetings that this was going to come forward, on this dais, in front of the camera, that said publicly that we would be establishing a curbside advisory committee to this council, at council meeting, over and over again. Because it was brought up, what are you going to do? And at the very first meeting, when we voted that settlement, it was announced that we would consider doing that, and I brought it up at subsequent meetings. So this should be no surprise to any councils that are sitting up here that we had discussed setting up and forming this committee. And this is the first step, set the committee with the charge of, okay, come back to us, report back to us. And that's all I'm going to say on that. Counsel DePietro?
Mr. Chairman, from the get-go, I was rather optimistic hearing about what was going to be the format of this committee. I do concede with Counsel Nash and Counsel Amanda that, yeah, maybe it's, he's an open-ended opportunity. I don't know which councils be involved, and this is a precedent for councils to come. I love the fact that we would be one or two counselors who would be in their own with citizens. And what really got me excited about this is citizens are going to get involved, citizen involvement, citizen involvement. And perhaps, this could be set up for one or two counselors, who then maybe could run this meeting, help orchestrate it, but not have a vote, perhaps. And it would be citizen members who would bring their opinion to council. And I think, unless I've lost the premise of where Counsel Nash, Counsel Amanda are going, is, yeah, DPW, we discuss DPW, and general government, obviously, it's, hopefully, the majority of counselors there. But in an open-ended discussion like this, there is the chance that two counselors might have an open-ended opportunity to bring, and I'm not saying they would, or I'm not saying this council, it might be two councils, three councils later, if this is set up, might have an open-ended opportunity to bring in, let's say, one side of the personal agendas. And I think that's where these two councils are coming from. So, I'm all for it, and I'm all for bringing the citizens in as much as we can, even more so than, I think it's only three citizens here, bring in five, six, six, seven. But I would love to have councils there as advisory only in this committee and not have a vote. And I think that's where the whole premise of setting this subcommittee up, or don't even call it a subcommittee, it's a curbside advisory committee, was coming from. And I was all for it from the get-go. But, and I get where there's a little, yeah. But other than that, I'm certainly all for it. And just to maybe put that, and I don't know if anyone's on the same wavelength as I am right now, but I think I see what both sides of the argument are. Mr. Chairman?
Okay. I understand your point. I do know that in some conversations with Counselor Nash, he believed that this should be a council pushing this agenda. Am I correct, Counselor? And given everything that we have on our plate with other issues, the thought, and do we bring citizens in to talk about this? And we definitely need the input. I could see it both ways. My thought was, let's have this committee work on it separate than the other everyday committees that we have. You know, it certainly could go to EHS, I suppose, but EHS, we have issues with education. We have issues with, with other departments. So the charter is clear that we can establish these advisory committees. It is an advisory committee. The thought of having the council lead it as, as chair and have them participate in it is because it should be council-driven with input by these and facilitation of the citizens as well. So it was to, I put a lot of thought into this as to how to, how to move forward this. So that's where I'm at. A mission statement, I would want that derived from the committee that we appoint, as to say, okay, come up with your mission statement. I think, and that's why being driven by a counselor, is the fact that they know what this issue is. They've been intimately involved in the Casella issue that we had over the last six months. Know what the issues are, know what the timelines are, know how our backs were up against the wall of a possible fact that we had no plan at all. So I think that's the direction I was planning. Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I can appreciate the sentiments, but again, as I refer to the agenda item, there is nothing in writing short of the wording that's presented to us tonight, and yet there have been conversations had. You've mentioned, as you've said. I'm not thrilled with the one, two, third lineup, three citizens recommended by the curbside committee chair. That could certainly cause me some heartburn. I'd like to see it go through the typical process, as we do with other subcommittees, where if citizens are interested, they send their board interest forms in through the town manager, or some sort of means like that. And what's more, we have a document dated May twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, that the town manager, the director of inspection services created on some of the options that were related to curbside collection, transfer stations, pay-as-you-go or pay-as-you-throw, things of that nature.
Are you careful of that, Mr. Nash?
Yep.
It's not sensitive. His memo was dated May twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen. It's public record.
Oh, okay. That, that's before my time, I guess, before we entered into the other things. And there was no action on it, Mr. Chairman?
No action.
That's all it is. He just sat there. So...
And there's no action from the advisory committee?
Hold on.
Counsel Nash has got it, I'm sorry.
So, to your point about the line about, I had to be very careful in wording this due to the fact, and that's why I have a town bylaw committee that we have to do, because when I looked at town bylaws and town charter, there's conflicts in wording as to, okay, if you set this up this way, there's a certain procedure, and it relates to advisory committees. And then if you look at the advisory committee language on the charter, it says that it's, it will go through the normal process, like you say. So how do you do that? So we're, so how do I navigate that? How do we navigate this to get this committee going? That was my way of saying, okay, it's recommended by that committee chair, because of the way the language was, the conflicts that we had in the language. But I don't want to wait two years by the time we get through bylaw review and charter review to try to figure out how we can establish this advisory committee. So it was, it was the way I tried to draft this, that we could look at the charter issues, the bylaw issues, and move this agenda item forward. It was clearly that they would, you know, the guidelines that I would hope that if this was passed, can't do anything as a council chairman unless the council directs us to do that. So I can't say, hey, go ahead and apply by this parameter, because there's no charge. I can't develop a mission statement because I'm just, one of the councils, my only job as chairman is to run this meeting. I have no other way to do anything else outside of this meeting, except to moderate this meeting. So somehow, direction from the counselors, if you don't want to do this, then tell me you don't want to do this, and come up with another way for us. But we're not going to kick this can down the road. So I was, I was looking at charter, bylaws, advisory committee, and issue to move it forward. So that, that's how I tried to plan. And it's very difficult, and every time I look at this, no different than budget policy, what our direction is as a council, what I mentioned earlier, and how that conflicts with certain provisions of bylaw. There are so many issues between bylaw and charter that need to be addressed that nobody ever thinks about. So this was a first step to say, hey, how do we get this at least off the ground as an advisory committee? That's all it is, is advisory committee. There's nothing binding by it. It's a group of people that are interested in moving this issue forward. That's all it is, to tell us yes, no, here are some options. All I know is, I'm in an awful lot of meetings. I don't have time to come to another curbside meeting. If there's a group of individuals that want to move this issue forward, thank you very much, move it forward. Anything for you? No, I don't have any. Counsel Nash?
I'm good. Thank you. And all due respect, there's nothing that I've said that was intended to get you flustered, Mr. Chairman. This was something that was brought up at EHS last year. No, there was no action taken, Counselor Adam. Adam should correct on that matter. But the memo I referenced, I need to be very clear about this. We had an EHS meeting dedicated to reviewing this memo, so there was nothing sensitive whatsoever in it.
I said, I apologize. I thought it was within respect to the other man.
I'm only clarifying, since you thought that there might have been some conflict or concern, Mr. Chairman, I want the public to know that we had a public meeting.
It was duly noted.
And what's more, I bring it up because we can continue that conversation, and in the interest of transparency, if we're going to establish a committee, what better solution could we put forth than to bring such a topic to a subcommittee, such as general government, and establish that subcommittee, or that advisory committee, with the available input from all counselors openly, transparently, and that from the general public? We haven't done that. I can look... done that. I can look at all of those things, and I'm perfectly happy to see this go forward tonight, if that's the will of the council. I just think that we could have done it a little bit differently. I do have concerns with the wording when it comes to how this committee is composed. Thank you.
Anything further?
Nope, I have nothing.
Counsel DePietro?
I wonder, Mr. Chair, and I'm asking your advice as to whether to make a motion to change the wording, which would essentially just say to vote to establish a curbside advisory committee to the town council according to chapter two, section 4.4 of the town charter, period, subject to discussion.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Chair. I apologize. I was going, something, what was that?
My question to you, Mr. Chair, would you find, would you deem it advisable that I make a motion to vote to approve the establishment of a curbside advisory committee to the town council according to chapter two, section 4.4 of the town charter, subject to discussion by council or further in committee? Just so we don't throw the baby out with the bathwater here, because certainly, I think it's a tremendous idea. I agree with several of the counselors here. I'm not excited about some of the language, but I would hate to see this not pass this evening, just based on a couple clericals that I think could be hashed out very quickly in subcommittee.
Well, what subcommittee would bring this to?
I would presume general government, wouldn't you, Mr. Chair?
I guess. I mean, you know, the charter just states that we can establish committees, subcommittees, and advisory committees as it deems reasonable and necessary. You know, so, if you wanna refer back to general government, make a motion. Counsel Manah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'm sorry, I don't have my charter in front of me. Does that say that the chair of the council has the right to form a committee?
No, it says the council. That's why it's here for a vote.
Oh, the town council, okay. Well, no, 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 don't, please don't. I don't agree with the amendment that Counsel DePietro is bringing forward, only because you need to have something set in place, but he wants to discuss it at a subcommittee meeting. And I think if this was to be discussed at a subcommittee meeting, because it has to do with education and human services and health, so I believe it would go to EHS and not general government. But I can see all sides of it. I can see, maybe something should have been, maybe a letter, or something, I don't know, but...
You could have seen something else, I'm sorry.
Something, I can see all sides of it. Maybe something in our packet besides the agenda item. I can see your side of it, and I fully support being proactive the way you are. I can see Counselor Nash's side. I can just see all sides of it. So, on that note, I'm gonna support it. That's all. If it goes to a vote like this, I'm gonna support it.
Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? One opposed. Thank you. Counsel's forum. Counsel Manah?
Didn't I talk enough today?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Pulaski, I apologize. I saw you there. Did you have something to add on this? We already took a vote, but if you have something to...
Only that, because you have the wisdom and foresight to look five years down the road, we could be really clever and do it better than anybody in the whole country. And we even have time, because there's some really creative, if we just emulate what people are doing in other parts of the country and the world, we could have some that might even make national television if we're very clever. So, I was thinking, we have time to have like a waste resolution study group, where it doesn't really fit the, what you guys are trying to get the glove hand to get it to the way we do things. If we really explore this, it may not be just curbside. Some people might wanna be rewarded for bringing it somewhere. Some people want it just the way it is, put it in a bag, they may have to pay a few bucks. Some people, they wanna be obsessive about it, they might actually fulfill some of the promises that were made back when we had recycle bank. We have real solid hard cash. And we have the time, because you have the foresight, to see the problem down the road. You know, it's just, maybe that could be the folk part some of this group can consider. Maybe just have a few events on a boring night. Maybe someone even pay for pizza, where people come and discuss it. And look, and you look at this, you study this, come back and report. And it could even be fun, something to do.
Thank you, Mr. Pulaski. Appreciate it. Counsel's forum, Counsel Manah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just wanna go back to the announcements with the ice and the drainage, and the drainage on Main Street. I reported that a couple weeks ago to the town manager with regard to, I mentioned it before, they put the piping in, because every year, that's a problem, the ice in the 600 block, the water draining out, and the cold, and the ice, and the kids walking to school. There was piping coming out, and I believe I reported it to the town manager, with the piping coming out with regards to that. Now, maybe it's preventing the water from going on to the sidewalk, but it's presenting a huge problem across there. Now, kids still have to cross, cars have to come down, you know? And actually, I went down by that area this morning, and I did see somebody from the hospital picking away at the ice. And let me tell you, the ice was like this. It was just that. So, I'm glad that, hopefully, this will be looked into and resolved.
Heather's here, if she wants to respond to that.
Because I don't think we were supposed to be like, with pipes into drains into the streets and...
Right. Okay, so, that's a retaining wall. The pipes that are coming out of the retaining wall are to relieve groundwater pressure from the back of the retaining wall. It's designed to have that outlet. There is no location, other than the sidewalk, for anything to drain onto there. So, I had nothing to do with their design. They were sent a letter from the town manager's office stating, you need to address the condition that's coming off of your property, because it is a town bylaw, to prevent the icing of the sidewalk. I think the effort with their pipe was an effort to do that. The location that they have chose to allow it to discharge to is probably problematic, and maybe another letter is due, or another call to the hospital is due. But what I would say is, and it is much worse this year than it has been in years past, but that is because we've had record amounts of rainfall. And this is, the areas that we're seeing have been problematic areas in the past, just never to the degree that they are this year. What I will state is probably none of them can be addressed at this time. Other than maintenance, as far as putting salt on them and scraping them up, maybe the hospital can extend their pipes. You're not going to start excavating with frost in the ground and be able to do anything. We're just gonna make a bigger mess, and we're gonna have big holes out there, and we're gonna have holes in pavement and everything else. I can't put a catch basin in to catch anything at this time of year. So, we can send letters. I do not have the power to go out and issue fines, or tickets, or anything, that would have to come from the police department or the Board of Health. It doesn't, I don't have that power. So, other than letters to the owners of properties, is basically all we can do. And to continue to investigate to make sure that they are groundwater. We're aware of the one on Morris Street. We tested it for, to see if there was fluoride in it, if there was a water main break. That leak has been there for years and years and years, is what we've been told. It's not a leak of a ground, it's groundwater that percolates out of the ground in that area. I wish I had the numbers to quote for you, but we've had the wettest fall, winter, on record. And I know we haven't had rain in the last couple, last week, but it's still percolating out of the ground everywhere. And because the frost is actually getting into the ground, it's going to percolate a little more, 'cause that's the only thing that's, it's now getting forced even by the frost. So, I would suggest another letter, or call to the hospital stating that they need to look at the outlet location and see if they can direct it. I believe they own that property that it's charging onto. Maybe they need to direct it into the backyard there, maybe it will find some other way. I personally think it's just gonna find its way out onto somebody else's property, 'cause there's no way to put it anywhere at this point.
So, my comments weren't directed to attack you in any way?
No, no, I know. And I understand that.
But I just wanted to make you aware that, yes, I did, I saw that pipe, I saw, and I didn't believe that we were supposed to be doing stuff like that.
Well, it's not being directed into a catch basin. We can't, and if it is really groundwater, it could go into a catch basin, 'cause it's groundwater. And it's okay to have groundwater going into your catch basins. It's not okay if it was being, if it's a laundry, if it's wash water, if it's gray water, if it's something of that nature. Gray water is water that you use to wash your hands and then gets discharged, or laundry. It's not okay for that. If it's purely groundwater percolating into a stormwater system, that is okay. It can't go into our sewer system. So, it can't go into our sanitary sewer system. That would be a big no-no. So, you're really, your hands are tied. That is not what it's doing. It is against the town bylaw. We have multiple locations like this that I don't, I don't like to go and tell somebody they're doing something wrong without helping them to get to a solution. There is not any other easy solution, other than them putting dewatering pumps in back of that retaining wall, meaning they're gonna have to put holes in the ground, and a pump down in the ground, and suppress the groundwater.
Okay. So, I mean, it wasn't meant to attack anyone.
No, no, I know.
But this area in particular has been a form in the town site for a very long time. And the water, since I've been on council, has always come out of there, and it's always just a sheet of ice. And, you know, I mean, now it's on the sidewalk, but it is going across the street. And so, that was my main concern. So, that's, I mean...
Completely appreciate that something needs to be done to address it. It's not a DPW issue, other than the maintenance of the road. It really gets pushed back on to, back on to the owner of the property.
Well, like I said, this morning, when I went down by there on my way to work, I saw them chipping away, chipping away, chipping away, and like I said. So, anyways...
Counsel Manah, do you have a question specific, because there is her time?
It's my, yeah, can I just, okay.
There's a quick question, it's related. It's not that specific site, but over, I was over in Cliff Street today, and there's an area of ice, it's leaking onto the pavement, that seems to be coming from a hydrant. I don't know if the hydrant is leaking.
Where was this, Cliff Street?
It's on Cliff Street, on very near the Clements Hill land.
Okay, we'll look into it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counsel Manah, I'm sorry, thank you.
No problem. That's okay.
While she was at the microphone, I knew your question.
Sure, yeah. So, I'd just like to wish everybody a Happy New Year, because this is our first town council meeting of the new year. So, happy 2019 to everyone. I'm not sure if papers are available yet, but if not, they soon will be for the 2019 Town Council local elections. I encourage people to seriously consider running for Town Council. As Counsel Jovan has stated, there will be five empty seats, or five seats up for grabs, if you wanna call it that. You do have to dedicate your time for that. And it is a very rewarding experience in my time. So, get out there, get your papers, consider it, and run for Town Council. And I think that's it. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Nash?
Thank you, through you. Thank you. Counsel Manah put it very well, that it is very rewarding. However, just to be very clear, it's not a paid position. It's all volunteer service when you're elected town counselor. Lot of good hours going to conversations, committee meetings, discussions, research, seminars, things of that nature, and all for the benefit of the town. Ultimately, I believe in my heart and in my mind that that's the goal of everyone that sits up here. Couple of things this week. First of all, I did see her in the audience tonight, and I know in December, I congratulated Rose on her retirement. She was still here, so I wish her well, since she's still here in January. That's Rose Canoyer from Economic Development, the CDBG coordinator. Also, I look forward to seeing the annual report from the town manager's office in the near future. That's a document that is near and dear to my heart, and I love seeing that come forth, even if it is only electronic, for most people to visualize or to view. Also, if you weren't aware, the Board of Health met on December 27, two days after Christmas. They posted a meeting near the deadline, in which a forum was held, and then they took a vote on raising the minimum age for purchasing tobacco-type products in the town to 21. While they don't have an issue with raising the age, as the state had allowed, there was a timeline that could have been met much more expeditiously, and that wouldn't have been so difficult to post a little earlier in the year. So, I'm a little disappointed that they had a meeting on December 27, right after Christmas. I think timing could have been much better. And I am not afraid to criticize my friends over there. I would have done it differently. Also, we like to talk about process, and I want the general public to understand that tonight on item 19, I had no problem with the notion of bringing forward an advisory committee. However, we like to criticize and talk about process in other areas. We should be looking at ourselves first, and I think there could have been a better way to establish a committee. And it's not personal toward anybody up here, but we had every opportunity to do it differently. Counsel of seven, hopefully it stays that way. Hopefully, it stays that way, and is very effective. I think we've had a good year, and I look forward to continuing it in that very direction. That's all. Thanks.
Counsel DePietro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Other than wishing all a Happy New Year, I have nothing else for you this evening.
Counsel Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, I had the opportunity to visit the middle school, high school, with the chairman and with Dr. Villar. And I have to compliment Dr. Villar on a very straightforward and honest hour and a half that we spent there, walking the building, speaking with the staff, the students. There's a lot of work that needs to be done, absolutely, but there's a lot of promise. Just for example, Dr. Villar empowered the staff in the middle school to completely revamp the bell schedule and the children's schedules, so that they can get a hold of the problem that they've been having with the kids kind of being out of control, and kind of running amok within the building. While we were there, classes passed a couple of times. The hallways were loud, but not a bad loud. They were the loudness of 12, 13, and 14-year-old kids that were chit-chatting in the halls on their way from one classroom to another. Nothing untoward, nothing, no screaming, no yelling, no profanities that I caught, just a bunch of kids that were passing from class to class. What was remarkable was that the kids were being escorted as well. There were staff members following the children from one class to the other, as well as staff members waiting in classroom doorways to greet the children and to help them to exit. Remarkable change, absolutely remarkable change, which to me shows promise. I believe that the school district administrators and staff are trying hard and working hard to make the changes that they need to make. This is one step. It's not a small step, I think. I think it's a pretty good step in terms of changing the culture, of bringing the children, the adult expectations that they will face later on. And I think it's been a good move overall, and I compliment the staff there at the middle school for what they've done. And I compliment the administrator, the administration there as well, for empowering the staff to do it. The fact that they brought in the student information consultants in the middle of the year, and they had never rescheduled the building in the middle of a school year before, and Dr. Villar made sure that they came in and empowered the staff to work with them, with the information system, to get it all done, and to get it done quickly. So, my compliments to everyone involved. I do believe the receiver is being transparent. I have faith in what he's telling us. He didn't hide anything. We saw some things that weren't pleasant to be seen. But, the school's in transition, and I look forward to my next visit of the elementary schools in the future. Thank you, that's all I have.
Counsel Ann?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I wanna thank Ken of the rail, the Trails Committee, for taking me on a little tour of the trails in the local area. I'm looking forward to working with Paul, Ken, and the Trail Committee this next year, to help them move along their ideas for the town, for their trails, or for our trails, and to beautify the area a little bit more and bring more people... and to beautify the area a little bit more and bring more people into our town. So I want to thank him for taking his time out of his day for me. I wish Counselor Morales, or former Counselor Morales, the best for him and his family, and I understand the obligations it takes to be a father, a husband, and just, and this, it takes a toll. So I wish him all the best. I'm looking forward to this curbside advisory committee. I'm looking forward to standing it up so we can see where we go from that point on. I'm enjoying the fact that we are planning ahead instead of waiting until the last possible minute for our town. This is something that affects every single one of us in this town and that pays for that trash removal, the recycling, the bulk pickup, everything. And I think proper planning will help move this town along a long way until the last possible minute, and everybody's scrambling, and next thing you know, you're paying out of your pocket, because there's a lot of people that can't afford $120 a quarter at the last possible minute. If you are interested, please fill out the information sheet that you can find on the town manager's page, and get that, and they'll put that in our boxes for us. Thank you. I got a few more things, I'm sorry. The trustees of soldiers and sailors, marines, and airmen memorials board that Chairman Jovan had mentioned, looking forward to seeing that happen. There are a lot of memorials for our veterans that are sitting there, and nobody knows anything about them. They're getting cracked, they're getting hit all the time, they're whatever it may be, they're not being well-maintained. And so, and the only time they do maintain them is during the Veterans Day or Memorial Day process. So I'm looking forward to seeing what they come up with. Again, five members, three veterans and two non-veterans. I will do my best to make up, make all those meetings because I am a veteran, and I think we can do a little bit better job in this town by proper planning of those memorials, maybe in Dresser Park or other places. I have visited Trade Winds the other day on Main Street, and it was an eye-opener for me, and I want to thank them for taking their time out of their day for me. It was very interesting to learn what they do and how they help the community. One thing that came out of that was that they had no contact with Southbridge Schools. So we sent off an email with the, to the receiver and the assistant superintendent, and now they are talking and helping each other out. It was amazing that it wasn't happening before. They service 15 towns, and this town, one out of those 15 was being communicated with. So I'm looking forward to seeing where that goes, and I'll keep everybody up to date. And lastly, volunteers, we always need them. I think this year, we did fill a lot of seats by pushing and pushing and pushing. But if anybody ever has a question on what is open, you can go to my Facebook page, or you can call me, or text me, or any other counselor to find out what is open. We constantly need them. Talk is cheap, actions is real, and we really want to move this town in the right direction. I think we're getting that way. It takes a long time. And I'm proud of our citizens, our town council, all of our boards, all the volunteers, all the directors and their staff and their members, of great things that they're doing for this town. So I just want to send another thank you to you for everything that you guys do and bearing all of our simple questions to you and, you know, making your day on a Friday before you're supposed to go home. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Counsel Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a couple of points. First off, you might remember that a couple of weeks ago, we had a sit-down with, at EHS, with Ed Moore. And the Mass DPH, the Department of Public Health, has received notification of Harrington's intent to close their interpatient pediatrics unit, and they're scheduling a public hearing at 4:30 PM Wednesday, January 30th, at the Public House in Sturbridge, to give people a comment, an opportunity to comment on issues related to that closing. Written comments can be submitted to the DPH, Division of Healthcare Facility Licensor and Certification, Attention Closure Coordinator, 11th floor of 99 Chauncey Street, Boston, Mass 02111, through the period of up to and including the day of the hearing. And they'll be accepting oral commentary at that hearing, which again is 4:30 PM Wednesday, January 30th, at the Public House. Also, I wanted to point out that you might remember a while back that we were talking a little bit, and we, the council voted to be, to be an intervenor in the Charlton landfill, Liquid Natural Gas project. And I got an email from the person who's overseeing that project to say that they had put it, they've temporarily put the project, the proposal on, suspended the proposal because the company has not yet finalized their preferred and alternate sites. So they're doing some environmental, environmental and engineering analysis. They might require a new public hearing, which I would assume would be in Charlton, especially if they decide to change their sites, but we'll know some point in the future. The setting board has not ruled on our or any other petitioners to request to intervene, so we won't, but we won't need to reapply whenever the process restarts. Also, I just wanted to ask, I forgot to mention earlier that general government will be meeting at 6:30 on this Wednesday. And Ron, a question for you. I was wondering if, with all the, with all the reports about the federal shutdown issues, has our town seen any impact from federal shutdown issues that you know of?
So, yes, known to I'm aware of nothing. I don't know about on the school side, but on the town side, nothing at this point.
Oh, that's good, okay. Oh, and the next meeting will be Monday, January 28th, at 7:00 PM, here in the chambers.
General, 22 votes are entered in executive session according to Mass General Lodge, Chapter 38, Section 21A3. To discuss strategy with non-union personnel, town managers contract to discuss respect to collective bargaining, DPWC, collective bargaining unit, police collective bargaining unit, fire collective bargaining unit. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the government's bargaining position if the chair declares return to open session to vote.
Second?
Roll call.
Counsel DePietro?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Manah?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel Steve?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Thank you. No. Another session.